Well made your order. Please drive me to pledge please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of Georgia stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our all. All right. Minutes of previous meeting. We have a motion in a second to approve the minutes. Do we have any additions or corrections to those minutes? All in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Approval of the agenda, as you can see, there's a few things that got added since the meeting. Okay, we have motion in a second to approve the agenda, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries and the agenda is approved. First up, Steve.
Got the phone company back out and got an updated quote, a little over eighty-five hundred dollars. That's for the three on each floor and two over in the AMR.
Upgraded Wi-Fi.
Upgraded Wi-Fi, yes.
They're gonna remove all the old ones, is that correct?
The old ones will...
Yeah.
So nobody can plug into a Mac and then...
Well, I guess it's two separate thing, but I'll check to see what, if there's old stuff that needs to be replaced. Or pulled out.
Adam, did you talk to the social services officer?
I haven't asked him, but I would assume that since we're doing more than initially intended, I think they'll be happy with it.
Have you any contact with him, Steve?
Yeah, they know about the plan, yeah. We, right after, right after the last meeting, it was a meeting with NRG and social services and they were...
You were good with it?
I didn't hear any complaints.
I haven't had you called.
No.
We have, we have social service meeting tomorrow, and I'll bring it up, but if we make a decision, but I would assume I don't know why. Three or others are re-Wi-Fi up, access points per floor should more than blink at the courthouse, I would hope.
Well, and when, when plugging into the wired network, I think it's important when the room is reserved to let Nathan or Steve know or both that that's a requirement needed, and so, so Steve can make sure that that port is, is turned on. Because that is a different access, isn't it, Steve, where sometimes those are shut off?
Is there a form they fill out, Kathy, when they want to reserve a room, or is it just only verbal?
Um, no, it's just verbal.
Verbal.
Yeah.
You're just allowed to know and ask.
But we already addressed that from when everything started, so when people schedule a bigger meeting or even just three people, we ask, you know, do you need any, do you need anything else, do you need...
Some of the port issues too were on the energy side because they were stuff that was linked directly to the, to their server, correct? Because like in the, in the social service offices where we were having issues too, they were ones that were hooked up through energy, so they were gonna work on fixing those. We had the one, dead one in the meeting room, but that was, that's been fixed.
Yeah.
Should have, should have a problem going forward with that. And this should get really good access to, you know, everybody in the building that needs to come in and use Wi-Fi, so. What, what was the quote previously, do you recall? I don't remember.
Yeah, forty-four and seventy-eight.
And this about doubles the number of access for, of access points.
Four more access points and... The what? With, yeah.
Labor cost one up.
More labor and more access points and additional. But you were gonna need any of the switches, which were left out of the witches.
Okay. Other questions, discussion?
I'll make a motion for approving the purchase of the quote from NDTC.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve contract with NDTC to upgrade the Wi-Fi, put out to the tune of eight thousand five hundred and thirty-nine dollars and ninety cents. Further discussion on the motion. If you aren't paid, we don't need your call, so all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Vote same sign. Motion carries. Very good, thanks Steve.
Appreciate it.
Let's take care of it. Both stepped out of the room over there.
You always confuse me, you walk around there when you want to address this.
Well, good evening, everybody. I ask Andy to get on the agenda here, joint powers agreement regarding the captain position at the jail. As you may or may not know, Ramsey County hired a captain to work in the jail. And I believe things have been going smoothly, I see Rob's in the back of the room. I was contacted by Howard Swanson, who's the counsel for the law enforcement center. And we talked through a few things, so we both kind of agreed for our sake and for the law enforcement center's sake, we just needed something maybe a little more formalized. So he put together this draft of a joint powers agreement. He was counsel for the city of Grand Forks for twenty-some years. It's a pretty stock agreement. I'm hoping you've had a chance to look over it. If you haven't, and you see anything that is of concern to you, please let me know. Otherwise, I hope you would best some authority in need to make some desired changes, if there's things that need to be changed. Essentially, this just puts it on paper that he works for Ramsey County, who's responsible for what, and when they're responsible for it. When I looked through it, the only two questions I have that I think maybe need to be addressed. So we, as the county, pay him, but then would give reimbursement from the law enforcement center. I guess I have some questions on how that process looks. And then the other question that I have when I read through this, it says that the agreement can be dissolved within X number of days by either party. I think we should make a change on that, whether it be weeks or months, just so we're not getting left high and dry. And so that everybody has enough notice to change or respond accordingly if one party decides to go the other way. That's really all I have. Rob, do you have anything you want to add?
Yeah, so this was just initially drafted by Howard, who is representing the LEC, and, you know, I questioned the reimbursement of the salaries and benefits. I don't know what the intention is there. We do have this on the agenda for the LEC board meeting tomorrow as well, because our board hasn't seen it yet to go over some of those things as well. So it's, it's just trying to fine tune like, like Bo had indicated, make sure everyone's covered and we've got all of our bases done, so.
And this is just a really early draft, this is by no means the final, but it's, it's kind of a good working skeleton. They've used similar agreements in Grand Forks for a number of years and haven't had any issues that I know of. So.
What do you think is a reasonable timeframe for the termination of the agreement, three months?
I think that would be appropriate.
That was gonna be my question in reading through it, was, you know, that's left blank, and what do we think a reasonable timeframe is to be able to, if it's an outline that needs to occur, you know, from the LEC side as well as the county side?
Well, and I, I don't wanna hang Rob out to dry, and that's not my intent, but say the LEC were to turn around and say, ah, this isn't working, we want to terminate two weeks from today, you know, then that puts us on the hook two weeks from now, you know, so.
Three months.
I think three months is appropriate, I don't think the LEC would do that. I think it is working fairly well right now. I think this is a model that's used around the state with the exception of Dick incident. So we're not the first to try something like this, we won't be the last. And I think this is just a good place to start, kind of get it down on paper what both parties expect. Other questions or comments for both to give us some guidance?
I, I guess, I'm a little confused. So the termination of the agreement, that just agreeing to what? That the captain no longer is allowed back in jail, or?
Well, and so, from my perspective, the point of agreement is to outline and define certain legalities that need to happen to be able to access the information and services that the captain needs to do. It's just establish that, so, 'cause currently, if he's not employed in law enforcement center, yet he supervises law enforcement center employees. So what information can he access? Can he access those employees' social security numbers? Can he access those, that, their contact information? That's privileged information, so to try and establish a joint powers agreement is the way that Howard recommended, we try to establish and make it to where he falls under those, so he can access those, those types of things. But the agreement, I think, itself comes with where you have to have that termination, or have an out clause, or how to have that defined in there. I don't, again, I agree with Bo too, to where I don't see that that's gonna be an issue, but it still has to be in the document.
And we have it in here, right?
It's just one term of many. And I know Captain Craft isn't here, but this is also for his protection.
Right, absolutely.
So he knows who's paying him, what the expectations are, what he has access to. The LEC knows what they can give him, and so, and it's for us too, in case something were to go wrong, we could say, hey, here's what we agreed to. And I think there's some place, some stuff in place already, I know there's a memorandum of understanding between the board and Captain Craft, but just a little more formal, I think, is probably the way to go on this situation. And I can work with Howard, but kind of fine tune some points.
There's no question we want to keep under the county sheriff.
I agree. That, that will be explicit in the agreement, that he is an employee of Ramsey County, he answers to the sheriff. And then as such, I guess, we're financially responsible for him, and that's what comes with it, right?
Definitely.
Wasn't, is that the expectation that we'd get reimbursed from the LEC?
For his salaries?
No, I didn't, I didn't think so either. 'Cause didn't Steve include that in his budget, for his salaries?
But I think this is the start point of, you know, the discussion tomorrow at the LEC board meeting too, when this is shown to those board members to say, is that, was that the expectation, are they okay with that? Is it something where maybe we split or whatever? I mean, I think that's where we, where the discussion of this isn't completely finalized yet comes to the play list in my mind.
So, on that note, I was thinking on this, so he is an employee of Ramsey County, and we are financially responsible for him. But he, as in his capacity, he would be providing services to the other member counties of the LEC, and I think maybe that's where Howard wanted that reimbursement portion in. I don't think that was ever an expectation. And so, if, if that's where we want to dial in on things that need to get fine tuned, that's fine.
I, I guess in my, my thought process would be, you know, getting feedback from what the other counties were thinking at tomorrow's meeting, and if they have a huge problem with it, then we'll, we can adjust accordingly. I mean, the expectation, I guess, when, when we went along with this agreement and decided it was something we were gonna do was, I was under the expectation as we were gonna end up paying. So if they're willing to take on the cost or at least a portion of it, then we work with the other counties and we make it right. So my mind.
I don't see any problem with the board on this agreement at all.
No, I, I mean, like I said, it's a lot of boilerplate type stuff. The other thing that may be worth looking at is the insurance portions of it. I think it's pretty well defined in there, who pays what, if something were to go wrong or somebody were to get hurt, as far as liability. That being said, I'm not an expert in insurance law, so give you that a little disclaimer. As always, if you have other questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, I'll try to get back to you as soon as I can.
And how about the benefits then? I mean, we have to, if we pay him, or this, yeah.
Who would be in charge of paying?
It's under number three.
What's the, the county paying every day?
Should we see Ramsey County's benefits, but we would receive money back, reimbursement.
Steve went to a meeting in business market today, so, uh, today, tomorrow, I guess, so. He couldn't be here today to talk to me this morning, and he's not gonna be at the law enforcement center meeting, so. Everything's going fine. Talked to the DOC, and we're going back to prisoners towards the end of this week. We're getting a little shit on the ninety-six hour deal. There's some more paperwork they had to get down to them, but look very favorable, go back to that. Everything seemed to be going very smoothly in this jail.
He must have talked to you right after he talked to you.
Okay, other questions, discussions? Fair enough, I guess we'll wait to hear back from what occurs at the LEC meeting, and maybe Bible is next to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, Sandy and Brad. Afternoon, evening.
I'll send up some, see everybody, I'm Sandy Steadman with North Central Planning Council, I'm the executive director. North Central Planning Council is the North Dakota Region Three designated planning district. The Department of Commerce received about fifteen million dollars in ARPA funds, and based on population, allocated so much per region. Our region is eligible to apply for up to one million dollars with a twenty-five percent match requirement, so two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar match requirement to receive the whole one million. In about April, I organized the economic development people in our region to try and come up with some projects so that we can apply for that funding. And it is to address, it's the Regional Workforce Impact Program, and the projects, they want regional applications, and you can have more than one project, but they want the projects to address workforce needs in our region, and we all know we have workforce region, needs in our region. So with much discussion, we came up with two projects. The first one is to fund daycares. Access to daycares in the region is an issue, so we put out an RFP, a request for proposals. We had six daycares respond to that RFP, and we decided that we would, the requests were over eight-hundred-thousand dollars, but we had another project that we were working on, so we went, we're funding them in part. Some of them will be funded a hundred percent, less than twenty-five percent match, and then others with a higher level of request, we're funding in part. So we are requiring that the daycares provide their own match of twenty-five percent. And most of them are for expansion, to increase the number of slots that they have available. And it would, it should increase the number of slots in the region by a hundred and ninety, the expansion that they're doing. The other project that we came up with is for a mobile career exploration unit, we've had a number of titles for it, but that's the one that we're sticking with. And we're looking at purchasing a van and retrofitting it with virtual reality equipment and simulation videos, and so that the... And we're working with the schools and the students for career exploration. We're looking at focusing on those jobs and careers that are in high demand in our region. We will be contracting with a job coach to operate that unit, and we're running it as a three-year pilot project. After three years, we'll collect our data and see if it's something that, you know, if it's worked out, we'll continue it, and if not, we'll just say, okay, we tried. And, but the, the thought is to work with junior and senior students and use the virtual reality videos and the simulation videos to give them firsthand experience of different types of careers that are available. We will work with employers in our region, say Clements Road needs plumbers. And maybe we go into their facility, and we're looking at having up to thirty to fifty videos created, and then we will have subscriptions to already... There's entities out there that already have a bunch of career-type videos available, so we'll have subscriptions. But say a plumber will go into Clements Road and have them, just for an example, and create a video, maybe do a walkthrough there, and create the video in their facility of the type of work that a plumber would actually be doing. So that students would then be able to use the virtual reality and simulation equipment to experience that firsthand. The twenty-five percent match for that part of it ends up being ninety-seven thousand seventy-three dollars. We're using some in kind, but then we need cash match, and we're looking at the job authorities, the EDCs, the counties, to gather all that match. And then the last thing would be business sponsorships, that we would approach businesses for sponsorships, and that would be after we're approved. Our application is due at the end of the month. We were given a short turnaround to get all this developed, and we will know in September if we're funded. So the funding, they are not, the grant does not allow us to pay for operating, so the operating for the mobile unit, we cannot fund with grant dollars. We can pay for the equipment, the videos, the subscriptions, all of that, but we can't pay for operating. So that's, we're using the match dollars to pay for the operating. Brad, do you have anything that you want to add?
I've mentioned it a couple of times that I've been here, and we're gonna go to the, go to the kids, we're gonna go to the communities. You know, when you, when you start pulling off the names of towns across the region, you know, I didn't know some of them outside of Ramsey County, but, you know, we're gonna be, you know, we got Leeds, Minnewaka, Cheyenne, Lorwick, Maddox, Starkweather, Munich, Langdon, Hedmore, Candu, Rolla, Ralla, I mean, I go on and on, we've got a lot of those smaller communities. So that's where we'll be using it, going to the student, to the parents, and in a one-on-three or a one-on-four, a parent and a couple of parents and the student will talk about the careers, and when Sandy said careers, the careers that are available in our six counties. We're, we're pushing those careers, okay? If someone says they want to be a marine biologist, they probably could be, here at Devil's Lake, but I don't think we need fifty of them, right? I don't think we need five of them. It's, it's the careers that we have in our region, so the businesses will want to sponsor kids that will be a plumber or an automated technician, or a welder, maybe an engineer, maybe enough of them, but... But, but, you know, those type of jobs are what we're trying to get filled, and to fill that pipeline with potential workers. There's programs galore from the state and, and job service that we aren't getting out to all of them. We can cover thirty thousand dollars of a thirty-five thousand dollar dental hygiene program, you know, potentially. I mean, we could do that for welders and for diesel technicians, you know, those type of jobs, so that's the idea. It's ARPA dollars to do it. Adam, you're on the Forward Devil's Lake board, you know, we're trying to get everyone handy up and supported as much as we can. We get a lot more dollars coming from the federal government through the ARPA dollars than the dollars that are being used for match, but... Sandy's done a wonderful job, you get six counties trying to agree on something that will benefit all of them. That was a challenge for her, this one, you know, we'll probably benefit more, when I say we, I'm looking at Ramsey County. Because why? We have a lot of the employers. But if we can get a kid from Leeds and keep him in the area, and he's working in town, and we can get a kid from Munich, or we can get a kid from Starkweather, all of those towns, and then further out, that helps the region as well. So that's the idea, the intent. Going back to the childcare center, four of the childcare centers are Ramsey County, the other two are outside the county, so we're benefiting heavily there, so. So Forward Devil's Lake has committed some dollars, and we're trying to each county to commit as well.
Forward Devil's Lake put in what?
We put in, we've got fifteen committed for the first year, and twenty and twenty for the second and third.
Have you approached other county commissions?
We've, we were in Minnewaka last night.
Oh, they don't?
Went well. They want, they want the tribal authorities to kick in too for Ramsey County, so we've got a call there. New Rockford, Eddie County is in, Cavalier County's in, Connor County's in.
Rolla County? You mentioned Rolla, wow.
There's a reason why I asked for more money for Forward Devil's Lake, and we knew that Rolla would have trouble because they're really hurting.
Kind of approach them.
Yeah, we're gonna still approach them, we're gonna still approach the tribal group up there as well, so. The intent is to try to get everybody on the same sheet of music and understand what we're trying to do.
Absolutely.
Adam, you were in the discussion with Forward Devil's Lake, you know, we had a unanimous vote for our seven board members for it. It's an attempt, you guys have heard me talk about the 2020 program, trying to get, we're using those same type of programs. But we're gonna go to the schools in a very expensive, high-tech, off-the-grid van. It's gonna have logos on it, it's gonna look like NASCAR, it's gonna be exciting for kids. We're gonna use that attempt, so there's marketing here with this as well.
You're on the right track.
It's another way to try to sell things like the 2020 program, where instead of having them come to us, we're gonna try to go to them. And then hopefully we keep them here, and then they have some of those kids develop the daycare centers.
We're gonna have the job coach align them with those programs, and North Dakota has an apprenticeship program and their career builders program, so we're gonna try to utilize all of those to keep the students here. Chances are, by the time they hit their junior year in high school, they've already decided if they're going to college or not, and, you know, if they go to college, not many of them come back. So we want to get them early on, junior high, early in the high school years, and try to get them interested in careers that are here already.
That are here, that's the key. Now, at the same time, if we have a student comes in and wants to learn about something that we don't have that job here, I don't think we're gonna just kick them out of the van, obviously, we're gonna work with them, but...
Well, like we were talking about the last Forward Devil's Lake meeting, there's jobs in town here that are four-year degree jobs and things like that too. We need those people, I mean, we have fantastic junior college that we need people continually work at, and so there's gonna be all kinds of opportunities, but just selling the region basically, they can...
President, President Darling stated, we're back to the eighties with the bookmobile. I mean, the bookmobile, you gotta remember as a young kid in the seventies, that bookmobile, kind of the bars in Minnesota, it was a pretty big deal, you know? This is a higher-level version of that, obviously, but we are going to the community, so that's why we're looking for your support and requests that Sandy has.
Did you mention Nelson County?
No, they're not in our region.
They're not in your region?
No.
They're not in our region, but I got a feeling the van will go through there. You know, and I've talked with people in Nelson County, I mean, our workshop is, you guys know how far it is, you've got employees, I'm sure, coming sixty miles, so there's people from Grafton coming. You know, so we're gonna go out and we'll use it as an event, a marketing type beast, so. The operation part, a lot is gonna be on Forward Devil's Lake and myself, you know, because we've got a lot to gain by this, by workers coming to the region and coming to the area.
Hey, and all you're asking for, and all you're asking for is a commitment to five thousand dollars per year for the next three years.
That's right.
And a letter of support.
And a letter of support. Well, I appreciate the low number, I'm just wondering why we waited till after budget? You know, budgets for all the political subdivisions in the county was due, you know, we approved it at our last meeting, and Brad, you're well aware of, of that, and...
We had, we had the problem, we didn't have the matches put together till, till now. The Department of Commerce had a long time to get the dollars from ARPA lined up, but by the time we got it, Sandy's done, had to go.
And talking in our Forward Devil's Lake meetings, it's, we've been talking, voted for months, but it's been taking time to put the numbers together and everything like that, and there is still, if I, if I'm wrong, tell me wrong, but there's a possibility that there's gonna be some money peeled back from other regions too. We'll still have match dollars, but there might be some more dollars out there too, because there's some regions that don't have the plants. Plants. They're leaving money on the table, so there might actually be some more dollars out there, and we might need matched still, but it's, yeah.
Right, would that start this year then? For, for the five thousand dollars, see if the match got, or the grant comes through?
So the first year, if we're awarded, we would probably find out in September, and the grant funds have to be expended by June of 2023. So the first grant period is nine months essentially, and then it, it would go the next two years beyond that.
Twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five?
Yeah.
Well, Andy, really the only thing that we wouldn't be unbudgeted for would be the initial five thousand.
That's right.
We can get the, the rest here.
That's why, you know, Adam's on Forward Devil's Lake, that's why we made the commitment, we're, we're making a short call from some of the other counties here. That's just, that's reality.
Well, like, like I said to Brad, I said, I think since he's been at Forward Devil's Lake, I don't think there's ever been an ask from Forward Devil's Lake, no more money from the county. I think we've been at basically fifty-five thousand for... I think we've been at basically 55,000 for six years or something like that, so.
This is additional.
I won't be here, I won't be here next year when you come and ask for 100 grand, I won't be here.
And I apologize for the late notice. Our estimates and stuff, we've been waiting from potential contractors to get estimates back. That's taken us quite a while, so we really just got our budget put together.
How far away is this van? Do you think it'll take a year to get it?
No.
She said no, I mean, we're squeezing time here. I mean, we've got to get order a van. We've got a company that's in the Warren Park area, Vanna Vanna's.
Oh, okay.
You all know Ben, Ben Beliefen. So that's one of the first people we contacted. He's holding some inventory for projects that he, he's holding one for us. So, you know, we've got a lot of moons that have to align to get this money spent and to get it up and started, but.
And you could find out in September if the grant would be approved?
Yes, hopefully we'll find out in September.
And if it's approved, then you can give them the go-ahead and get rolling on it.
It's going to move quickly. I've had two or three people that we've talked to as part-time job coaches. Here's truly has been doing that job coach with the 2020. I'm committed to doing it. We've got time for me, for the board to do it. But we've got to have three, four, or five people that can go out and talk with parents and also talk with businesses. So it's not an easy job coach role.
You have to hire some people who, you know, have a van.
It's got to be contractor. They didn't have software, you know, benefits. So they went to purchase the van and to purchase the equipment, purchase the software license, the virtual reality. And it'll be marketing, and it'll be recruitment.
But the equipment is such that we could actually get the subscriptions and start even before we have the van. So it, you know, they can load it up in their own personal vehicle and go to where they need to.
Yeah.
This sounds like a very good project.
Go ahead, make that motion. I mean, pull along with the proposal of the support for the three-year commitment to $5,000 each year. Pull up with a letter of support, supporting the project. I mean, that's a job, yeah.
We have a motion and a second. We're going to take the money out of, on the first year. First COVID money? Oh, good, Jeff? Okay, so we have a motion and a second to approve $5,000 over three years, first $5,000 coming out of COVID funds and a letter of support for the project. Further discussion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Is that right with our auditor?
Yep.
She's writing.
No, I'm writing.
I can't wait to see the van, I think it'll be really cool.
You'll be able to go in too. It's Sandy kept successful.
I want to see the first kids going there, my first.
Have you shown them any mockups of, have you seen the mockups? You have to show them the mockups sometime.
Make sure, Brad?
I got them, I wasn't going to do it.
No, go talk to Brad, he's going to show you, it's really neat. Some of the ideas are really, it's going to be really nice.
I'm going to see it, I hope it comes to fruition.
You'll be able to try it out. I hope we get it done.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you for all of your hard work.
Kevin?
Yes. I'll start off with, I guess we'll just do update on the Rockwood project. Talked very close about grab one in Ramsey Four, and he's going to start the end of last week of this month. Then the other one we got going is a grab one on 10 with Gowan. And they're aware of their deadlines too, so they should be starting soon. That's about it for projects, I think. All you guys, anything you want to add?
I'm sure in Ramsey Three, we ended up real close to the original bid price on that, even though we had those consents to pay out. You know, we have a few items we eliminated, I can tell them there. And a couple, a little bit of under on some of the quantities. So I think we're going to end up within just a few thousand dollars of the contract price. So that's what number four just got paid here, so. I think the only work I have left to do is just have to do the seating behind the new curves for the new ADA ramps. And then Ramsey Four, the PSN plans are submitted August fifth, so we should run a track for fall bid opening for the box covered on 24. That's it.
Let's hope we have, we don't have dates for our October, maybe we have two or three times, excuse me.
For the.
Federal aid meeting?
I was going to ask you about that.
We're still working on, what do we meet, what's the highway at in October, at April more?
Currently set at 2:00 on the actual work there, but Seth was asking if he could switch up the date for 3:30.
Oh.
It'll be one more, too.
I got a very positive comment on coming three up in the day, so it's very, very good.
The paving job?
The paving job was very, very good. They were very appreciative, so.
The rig is nice.
Yeah, that's what they said, the rig was fantastic, so.
Yeah, you can go way too fast on it.
Well, let's, you know, send a deputy up there, make some money. Make it for the schools, I guess.
To be fair, you can go pretty fast on it before.
It is pretty.
Okay, the only thing I have is we'll take, need to take quotes for chips for next year. Not exactly sure of the cost, but it's going to be around 46,000 to 50,000.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second to, we're advertising for bids or quotes or?
Uh, just call for quotes.
Yeah, just going to call for quotes, okay. So we got a motion and a second to have Kevin call for quotes for our chip seal project next year. Further discussion of the motion. Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have, let's see how something come in.
Yeah. Ken, there are common theme lots up there, we're not starving too much of trees though.
You've got Sandy lot, but, yeah, see, those are those lots that female bought out and we're not supposed to be doing any to them.
Trees are affected in the wayers, I haven't seen it.
I haven't seen it either, to be quite honest. The wayers, I don't know, I was going to talk to the power company about that, but I think that's kind of their issue really, to be quite honest. It's, trees are in the way in your yard, the power poles, they usually come take care of them, so. But I'll talk to the power company.
We're not supposed to do anything because they're.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
They're supposed to go back to nature.
Conservation issues been on.
Right.
The lady at the doctor's, she's doing the mowing.
Yep, she does, and she keeps them up nice. I mean, she's not supposed to, but we don't, I don't know, I mean.
I won't say anything.
Quite honest, I go down the search, it's very, very, clips on the.
You can't blame somebody if they live next door, they don't want a big rainy disaster next to them, you know? Be like if you just decided building one half your yard or something, it wouldn't be very good, but.
That's a good feeling, I can't believe it. That Arterio and Pen or Norwack?
Who does Arterio?
Uh, I think it's my, I know I'm on Norwack.
Arterio is self-dependent, but I, I don't know. Arterio got their trucks stuck self-dependent, we don't know, so I think it's both of their lives.
You ready to talk to them?
Yep, I will.
Okay, anything else?
Need to get back to her about that too, I haven't talked to her about it.
Well, at least we can connect with the right people, hopefully get it cleaned up.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, Kevin, appreciate it. Excuse me. Okay, new business, ND Purse information. Right on the copy, we're going to go with everyone. Oh, you should be me a copy, okay. Uh, probably better, just a place. That one, okay. So basically, Brian's in the back if we have any questions for him. But following our discussion previously and remitting it to ND Purse as the employee, being a 2020 employee for the years in question. They came back with a dollar figure. And the total dollar figure is $123,547.14. Of that, the total contribution amount was, over the years in question, was $50,220.52. And then the interest that was gained on all of those was $61,233.53. So save for retirement, because compounding interest is a fantastic thing. So basically, what it comes down to in Brian's discussions with the employee. They agreed to pay their contribution, correct?
Verbally, yeah.
Verbally, yes, as was discussed previously. So off of that 123, then 24, 827, 84 would come off. So then the balance for Ramsey County to cover would be 98, 719, 30. And then we would cut, when that check was cut to us, we could cut one check in basically, and we could take care of it then. The question at hand, the question at hand is, I guess, a little twofold. One, in visiting with Candy, where do we take, where do we take the money from? Because we're on the, we made the decision to go this route, so where do we take the money from, one? And then two, at least in my opinion, and this is for discussion with the commission as a whole, we should have Bo come up with some type of a, just a document that says, you know, by paying this, we're, you know, settled up or whatever. I would assume we need something like that, just we have some type of documentation or?
Well, like a, like a one-pager kind of release to put in the HR folder or something?
Essentially, yes, just to say we settled up on this and no further action will come of this and.
I mean, that sounds reasonable.
Yeah, we pay your part, we'll pay our part, and we'll take care of it, and we'll be done.
You take.
Yeah, but they.
I don't, we don't have a choice.
Yeah, really, we don't.
We don't have a choice. We have no documentation to. To not do.
It's a pretty huge blunder, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, and Candy did reach out to Andrew. And they said.
Yeah.
They're free of it. They verbally told her that if we had got into a lawsuit, they would have covered a portion. But to me, that seems kind of acrid, but that's how they structured it, I guess, which is, I don't know, I'm not, again, I'm not an insurance guy, but that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. But regardless of what they said or did, this is the number that we have to figure out how we're going to pay for. Because we have decided that that individual was a 2020 employee, we've got to cover it, otherwise we are in arrears to purser that way. So in talking with Candy, we've got a couple options. Since the state's attorney had a second assistant state's attorney on budget, and those dollars have just been sitting there the whole year and haven't been spent, we can use the balance of that. Do you anticipate you're going to have anybody hired before the end of the year?
Probably not.
Totally not. So we'd have $75,000 right there from the state's attorney's budget that could roll right over to this. And then we could take the balance from the general fund or COVID dollars or whatever to cover the balance. So is it a lot of, I mean, it's not fun having to pay that dollar figure, but at the end of the day, it's, we have a way to cover it without blowing up bake on the budget or drawing down the general fund in a horrible manner, so.
I have a question. So that would be if we took the full salary of the third state's attorney. That means I couldn't hire somebody till July of next year, correct?
No, January 1.
January 1.
January 1?
Yep. And we don't have to take that whole thing. If you think you could have somebody possibly hired by November 1, we could just take.
I don't anticipate it. It's kind of slim pickings across the state in my field right now.
Until somebody gets, until they get new lawyers graduating, I would assume.
Yeah, we're probably looking at February at the earliest.
And you're still likely looking, searching?
Absolutely, we have posted things up. I think that seems to be a reasonable.
It's been about 13.
But, you know, I think that'd be reasonable to take.
Twenty years.
I think it'd be reasonable to take it out of Bo's budget with, with him understanding that if he was able to find a candidate that would be hireable for that position that he's looking for, that he'd go ahead and hire that and not wait till the first of the year.
Yeah, if you, if you find somebody that's interested and is qualified and you're comfortable, we can hire them and we'll figure out how to pay for it.
Right.
But a better understanding, instead of saying that it's going to come out of his budget, so.
Just come out of general?
Just do miscellaneous general, then whatever balances are remaining from any general fund budgets.
That's a good point.
We'll just roll into, back into that pot.
Because the state attorney's budget is a, is a general fund budget, so it'll just automatically roll back at the end of the year. So, but it, I guess I should have, yeah, you did a bit of Doug's, but I didn't, I did.
So it's just something for me to watch where numbers are at the end of the year closing books.
But hopefully we'll have enough people around our budget, we should be able to cover it.
Yeah, quite a few, I mean.
Yeah, we're doing really well on the budget this year.
I mean, mine comes up about $10,000 every other time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know if I've ever seen a department come in over. Very rarely, you know, maybe Captain on occasion, but it's usually a disaster, a situation or something like that.
Yeah, or, yeah, a skyrocketing asphalt price or something in the meantime, a budgeting or something of that nature. Yeah. That's the choice is what it is, so.
I have another question from the legal end. When do we have to pay out hers?
I just, I think I've read someplace with pay, like actual payroll files, which they're, it appears that's what they're treating this as, because it's on their website, it's a, it's a file and it's, it's got to be due, that you have like 20 days after, like a pay date, so.
Is there a payday?
Yeah, it's, it's whenever the statements.
We want interest to kick in again.
Well, it says August 2022, so.
It says, this copy was made 8/11/2022, so basically by the end of the month.
So is that the date that her portion is also due by?
The ND Purse don't care. They, they just want that amount. And they've always said it's up to us how we deal with the employee and get their.
They want the 123.
Yes.
And that comes from us.
And maybe this isn't the forum to ask it, but I'm going to. The employer cannot pay the employee's contribution based on our discussions and interpretation of the law, is that correct? Brian?
The employee has to pay their own portion of it.
Well, right, yeah.
But it's, it's on us as to how we get that.
Right.
Right.
But this is a, you know, a special circumstance comparatively to your normal payroll deduction, so.
We don't pay it until she pays us. Pays us for my share.
I think that's reasonable, since she has at this point verbally stated to us that she is willing to pay her portions. I think we communicate with her and say that we would like to have that check previous to the 31st of the month, have a document that says accordingly something to that nature, and that everything is free and clear at that point, and then we cut the check out on the 31st, or pay hers at the end of the month accordingly. I don't, you guys have to figure out exactly how that'll function, but.
So the only reason I'm asking is because 15 days isn't exactly a lot of time to get $25,000 together.
My conversation with the employee on Friday was who do I write the check out to? Okay, make it work.
Okay.
Okay. There's no 30-day extension from the state, I would guess, so.
No, I, I didn't have, I did not have that conversation with, with anybody from ND Purse.
I think it was.
If she tells you that, Brian, we'll go, we'll run with that.
So I guess we would need a motion where to take the money from and then probably to, what we're looking for. I can't, I have my mind is, yeah, but have staff work together to coordinate the payment from the employee as well as a document stating as such by the end of the month.
I'll make that motion then.
I'll second that.
Okay? And it would be money from the general and then have Brian and Bo and Candy kind of work together and make sure we get it handled by the end of the month then. Okay? Further discussion on the, you have a motion and a second, correct?
Right.
Further discussion on the motion.
We're going back 20 years to correct this.
Yep.
It's a 12-year period from 2005 to 2007.
Okay, further questions or discussion? Hearing none, I guess we're done. Hearing none, I guess we're not paying the right expense, so we'll be, we'll be regular, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Pull the same sign. Motion carries, okay. Visitors and delegations. Crickets. Announcements, anyone have an announcement?
Shouldn't, what I talked about, the JLAO pageant?
No, I think, I think Steve was really happy with, uh, the, the results of the progress that's been made in the hires and the correction office, and looking at upgrading us back from a, a level three to a level one facility and, and moving forward, talking with that hall and, and hopefully they'll come up and we've met all the obligations and hopefully we can get back to, you know, the larger capacity and we can get everybody back from wherever they're at currently, being housed to our own facilities, so.
I stopped Friday at the jail, talked to Steve, he wasn't there, and I talked to Dan Kraft himself, and we get along real well, he was happy to wait there, going, had some new ideas, I, he wants to run by the board tomorrow morning, and I think it'll be very favorable to all commissioners, so.
Uh, the other thing, I guess, uh, just to point out that, uh, the airport is having a, an emergency disaster drill tomorrow evening out of the airport with several responding, first responder agencies and the hospital and all those, those kind of things.
So if you drive by tomorrow, don't be concerned.
Don't be concerned, it's not a, not a, yeah.
This is only a bill.
I do think that the responders will be responding without their lights inside them and.
Yeah, they did have that on the radio.
But, but people could drive by and see fire trucks or whatever out on the roadway and.
If they happen to see a lot of commotion out there, that's what's going on tomorrow evening, it's good at the airport.
They need to drill for those things, you always have to prepare.
All we're required every, I think it's three years, is due to the FAA, and so it meets those requirements and it meets some other, uh, obligations and requirements for other agencies as well, so.
Okay. Okay, further announcements?
I got one that's maybe not quite as fun as that, but, uh, it's fun for me, uh, Noranda County personal viewer, uh, Steve Mo got the one, uh, for the twenty-one, one of the contours on there now. So, the old ones are from two thousand nine, so.
Oh, we're, we're updated.
You get to see what's been changed.
I'd like to see it.
And he changed the color scheme too, so it's a lot easier to read.
That's always good too.
And, and that was something that the joint board funded.
Yep.
Um, that was something through the International Water Institute, um, Chuck Fritz and his gang down in, in Fargo, put those together and developed, that was an, asked for a financial contribution from the joint board and, and we thought that was a, a really a good way to give back to our um, counties within the basin, and it's, we're updating the light hour information, uh, for the counties, and he's currently working on hydro conditioning for, for, uh, determining wetlands and water shifts, so, those are pretty.
So that, that updated information then gives us a better look into when we develop watersheds and stuff for culverts and all those kind of things, or?
It will, yeah, check that back to me, if you didn't have a timeline, and whether you can make that live yet, for those watershed delineation tool, but the, the contours are, Steve has up on your own personal viewer now.
That's a good, that's a good deal though, because if, anything we can have for more accuracy to make sure we're doing all those things right, that's.
Well, it, it's a pretty remarkable story when you stop and think about what you're doing with, uh, all the information that they have to gather and, and put into that to create that watershed, you know, for that particular crossing and a rowing, um, you know, and they'll determine that and give you the, the flowages on it and the hydrology on it and all those kind of good things, and it really, uh, works out nice and we're looking forward to getting that material up and then putting into the, the data, so.
Okay.
And it's something that, hey, you don't have to pay to subscribe to that website to have access to it. Just a, a little bit of a learning curve, and we'll work it on getting those, that, uh, tutorial up on our, our website, the joint board's website, and how to use it and how to access it, so.
All right. One thing, I guess, in Bo talking with Candy behind me, I heard here, and it's something I didn't think about, but yeah, we, we actually do have to have a motion to actually pay the bill, since we don't have a meeting before before the end of the month.
Yeah.
Because we make our normal motion to pay for the normal bills, and they can go over that five thousand, but we can't, so we'd have to have a motion in a second to then pay for the bill accordingly.
I'd make that motion up.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second to, uh, pay ND Pers, uh.
The one twenty-three, five forty-seven, fourteen.
The one twenty-three, five forty-seven, fourteen. Okay, further discussion. Uh, roll call please.
Brown?
Aye.
Fritz?
Aye.
Deese?
Aye.
Light Brown?
Aye. Motion carries, okay. Thanks, everyone, any further announcements?
Um, we needed a, um, uh, page, um, twenty twenty-two conference delegate, um, and the deadline was before today. Um, so.
Yeah, you need to, I told you about the email address.
Yep, so I, uh, put my name on there to be a voting delegate.
So you're gonna vote?
Yep.
Sounds fine to me.
I agree with that.
Because they needed to know by three PM, so I just told her to.
Well, you know you'll be there.
Put my name in and, um.
Sounds great to me, we trust you.
And then we got, or Bo got, um, email on the opioid.
Yeah. Opioids, uh, first of the settlement payments should be coming in, so that's good, um, we set up the portal, we set up a bank account, it's gonna drop into its own account and just start to gather dust there, uh, I think it, what was it, five thousand every month for thirteen years or something like that?
Two thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars and ten cents.
So I'm a little off, um.
For, for thirteen years.
For thirteen years.
But
Every month.
The state is also getting their cut, and that could benefit us indirectly, um, because they're getting their biggest portion of the pie, but if we put pressure on them to get services in our area, it's gonna benefit us anyway, so.
I was gonna say, hopefully they'll take those dollars and put it to public health and mental health treatment services and things of that, and addiction treatment services, that'll be helpful.
And I think that's the goal, and, uh, so far, nobody has a magic answer of how to spend the money, and state's attorneys and auditors all across the state are scratching their head if there's strings on it, but I think it's a good first step, and I think the other, you know, large manufacturers and producers will follow suit, come, you know, soon, hopefully. Soon being the relative term, it's like FEMA or Federal Highway, it takes five or six years to be sued.
So, this portion of the dollars, is this from the lawsuit that we joined?
Yes.
One of them, yes.
So this isn't the state lawsuit, this is one of the lawsuits through the private entity that we, the private attorneys we decided to go with?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, so we, would we have received this money if we weren't part of that lawsuit?
I doubt it.
We probably would have just got the state cut, so in other words, going with them probably was beneficial. At this point, we're not sure totally what it's gonna shake out, but probably was beneficial.
There's a lot of players and a lot of moving parts and a lot to keep track of, but the good news is some money is going to be coming back.
And who's making the payments right now, who's, who is this, this is with?
I wanna say this is Jan some.
Just one of them, okay. So that'd be, yeah, Jansen is Johnson and Johnson, I believe, and they do the same things, or different or to the same job?
Hopefully we can come up with the ways to help eradicate this problem from our society, that, you know, it, it, you know, not only affects us right here in double sight, but statewide, nationwide, worldwide, type of issue, and, you know, and the fact that you're making amends.
Four hundred thousand plus dollars over fifteen years, that's not nothing, that's a start at least.
Yeah, and we, and we just saw how compound interest works.
Yeah, so there's a bank and gain some money, and let's work with somebody on getting something done, huh?
City gotta pay out too, so there's some good potential for maybe putting our heads together and finding some project.
Maybe we've gotta work with our healthcare entities, hopefully, and maybe talk about mental health treatment facility, or maybe we can chip in or do something.
They only get eight hundred dollars.
Um, good, I'm, I'm glad that.
Okay, that's our order.
We're a part of it and.
All right, very good, anything else, we're good in the order. Hearing nothing?
Nope.
You are adjourned?
Yep.